All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna start our meeting. If you don't mind finding your seats and getting quiet. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn exec and re-enter public.
Motion.
Tom, and a second from Bill, all in favor? Welcome to everybody that's here. It's nice to see such a full crowd. We are going to stand and say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the best pledge ever.
Good job.
It was Tom, and then it was Bill. Okay, in case of an emergency, we will make our way to the exits, which are two at the back, two at the sides. And also, as always, this building and all of our buildings are smoke-free. All right, so that is going to bring us quickly to the Board of Education meeting minutes of October 1st, 2018. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes of October 1st, 2018. Can I get a motion? Who was that? Xavier, and a second from Christine, all in favor?
I thought it was not here.
Thank you. Okay, and there was an FYI of budget transfers. And also, we have our warrants that were certified 10-10-18. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on October 10th, 2018. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, and a second. Bill, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to Board Member Communications and Announcements. I know a lot has been going on. Is there anybody that wants to share? Really?
I'll just say that I got to go to Findlay Open House. And as always, it's wonderful to see how many options our kids have for academic and extracurricular opportunities there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, sorry. Shout-out and reminder, I'll do my Booster Club piece. Anyone who is interested in attending the Booster Club fundraiser or annual fundraiser, that is on Wednesday, November 7th, at the Crest Hollow Country Club. You can just go on to the Booster Club website to purchase tickets, or if you wanted to even purchase membership, or do a journal ad. We're looking for a lot of exciting people to come and show up and support the Booster Club, so we can give it all back to the kids.
Very nice, thank you. Christine?
Just a little commercial for the High School Drama Club's show called The Desk Set. It is going to be on November 2nd and 3rd. Three shows, tickets at the door. It's a 50's comedy.
Very nice.
Like, it was made into, it was a Spencer Tracy, Katharine Hepburn movie, so it's that genre.
All right. For myself, I would like to say that I've spent a lot of really great weekends attending marching band competitions. And, you know, I'm so proud to say that our marching band is just doing a tremendous job out there. They've been scoring mostly in first place, and every week their scores go up, and they're well on their way to their Syracuse competition, which is the last weekend of October. And, you know, I can't say enough about them. I'm so proud of that marching band. Also, another thing that comes to mind when I think about things that I'm proud of is our school district and the presentation that was made at a community meeting that I was invited to go to. It was held right here in this building. Mr. Polanski had organized it, and I'm gonna let him speak to it. But I can just tell you, as a parent and a board member, to hear just the presentation of all the ways in which our school district goes out of its way and does, works its hardest, and is so thoughtful about providing our kids with the best possible education, and also making sure that all kids are having the opportunities to really gain from the education that they get in this district. I left that meeting holding my head so high. I was so proud of the things that I heard that are going on, and I just, I wished, actually what I said to Mr. Polanski later on that day is, "I wish that there had been other parents in that room who could have heard the discussion and the presentations," and because it was really just a tremendous source of pride for me, and I think it would be as well for any parent that's in this room. And I will hand it to you, Mr. Polanski. Was everybody else done, though? I kinda stomped all over everybody's... Yes, okay.
It was a great meeting.
It was.
I'd like to thank the principals who joined. You know, it was a thought in my mind that we do so many things, and a lot of our focus in Huntington has been on building relationships between adults and children, and establishing partnerships within the community, but that a lot of people outside the walls of this district might not know about some of the things that we're doing from top to bottom, ensuring equitable access, and just some of the programs and initiatives that have taken hold over the past couple of years, and especially this year. And, you know, I know that those present, a lot from religious organizations, those from Family Service League, and from the Town of Huntington Project Cell, the YMCA, a number of different community partners that just don't have as much information as we would like them to have. And thankfully, I had a number of people there who were able to express some of the things that have been done in Huntington. And as Jen pointed out, they were thoroughly impressed, and they had an opportunity at the end of the event to share some of the things that they have going on that we might be able to take advantage of as well. And it's something that I do plan to do, regather this group and more, three or four times during the year, just to touch base and to make sure that we are collectively doing everything we can for these beautifully young faces that you see in this room this evening. So, thank you, Jen, for the summary, and I will add that I think it was as successful as it could have been, and thank you again to the principals. A couple of people I'd like to acknowledge. Recently, we have a partnership. Our science research program at all levels continues to grow. Now that we have so many new things in place at the elementary level, I did receive a communication, a fall bulletin, from the Huntington Breast Cancer Action Coalition. We have two young people who have been doing ongoing work, and really cutting-edge work with modern-day medical and other types of scientists. I'd like to acknowledge Sarah Fraley and Sam Roberts for some of the work that they have done, that they continue to do. I'll also mention that we have two teachers on staff who were honored as educators, or will be honored, but were announced as educators of excellence and will be honored at an upcoming event in Albany by the New York State English Council. So, congratulations to Angela Burner and Brendan McGowan. I also had the privilege of attending a Long Island Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development Conference on Friday, I believe it was the 5th or the 6th. Beth McCoy, Assistant Superintendent, happens to be the Vice President of that organization. We were very, very well represented as a school district, but I had the pleasure of being present when Mr. Brendan Cusack and Mr. Gomal Smith, the principal and vice, and Assistant Principal at Huntington High School, presented on Huntington's progress with restorative practices. And I will tell you that anybody and everybody who had any part of that presentation, that witnessed any part of it, and those that weren't there that heard about it are still asking to come visit and to see what we do. That really does make a tremendous difference and really works toward making Huntington High School the most productive academic and extracurricular environment that it can be. We also had two teachers from Southdown, Lynn Heffley and Valerie Murray, present on use of video. There's a green screen over at Southdown that, like, here's some very unique things are happening that I hope to take advantage of myself, but they did a presentation on video, blended lessons involving video across the disciplines. And I will speak to Mrs. Hebert about this, but I'd like both of those pairs of people to come in and do their, a bridge version of the presentation for the board. I think you will thoroughly enjoy it. A couple of other announcements. The first time in some time, we administered our PSAT during the week, and the goal there was to get as many students as possible to take the exam, and we have certainly exceeded a threshold that I thought we could reach. But we did have a tremendous number of students sit for the exam, and hopefully that will result in a productive outcome. It does take weeks for us to receive a report there. Homecoming is upcoming on October 20th, and I hope you receive my exciting announcement. And in my excitement, I did get the opponent wrong.
Hang my head. It's Midtown East, not the Third Head Blue Waves. Sorry, I got that from...
Please do not hold that against and prey on the excitement. And we'd like everybody to come out this weekend. Right now, the weather looks kind of iffy, but rain cannot keep the blue devils away. Please, this is a district-wide event, and to have, from little to big, including adults, we want the parade route lined with people, and we want as many people participating as possible, so please consider that. We have College Awareness Week at the middle school and high school coming up on October 22nd, and that will run through the 26th. And we are talking about how to bring some of that excitement also down to the elementary level. The NISPA Convention, a number of board members and myself will be traveling into New York City. Not often that it's in the city, so we look to gain some good feedback and attend some good workshops there. I see a lot of little guys in the audience tonight. Reminder that Safe Halloween will be held, as it has been for many years, on October 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the high school. It's a lot of fun. You can kind of do it all. You can do a little trick-or-treating on the outside if you so desire, but this is a safe Halloween event. There'll be lots of fun things available for all the kids at the high school. Huntington High School Open House on November 1st. Robotics Social coming up on November 5th. Mentioned the Booster Club Gala. We will also be honored as a district by the Composite Prototyping Center in Plainview. We were one of three districts to jump in on a material science research program that many, many kids over the years have been involved in. So, we, along with the districts of Sciocet and Bethpage, will be honored at this affair on the 14th. I believe I sent you information on that. And the Huntington High School PTSA, Findlay Middle School PTA Joint Fundraiser will be held at Kashi Hun, November 27th. Always a lot of fun, low-key and relaxing gathering for the adults to get together.
Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our first public commentary session. We have two times when you can come up and speak at the mic. It's open to residents, students, faculty. You get three minutes at the mic. We begin with comments and questions about the items for discussion and action, and then if there's time after that, you can refer to other things. And we just ask that you don't use any personal names of students or teachers. And that's about it. So, if you would like, you're welcome to come to the mic. And it you, Mr. Graber. No, and that's really nice, James. That's very considerate, and it's very thoughtful of you.
Good evening. My name is James Graber. I am a resident in the district, a teacher in the district, and the president of the Teachers Association as well. Tonight is the Board of Education Appreciation Night, and I feel that a few words are due. You know, it's a mantra in this noble profession of mine that educators are underpaid and underappreciated. Without comment on that, I can say that without a doubt, it is doubly, triply true for Board of Education members. You're an unpaid volunteer in a position wherein your waking life is filled with people's concerns and criticisms, and it's a heavy mantle. The number of meetings, emails, and phone calls takes a toll on all of your family and free time, and it's worth noting. In my position, it's likely that we will not always agree, but I will say that I honor and respect each and every one of your contributions to this district and its students, and I think you deserve a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I have to say, you know, I'll speak for everybody and say that it's a pleasure to work with our faculty and staff in this district. We're kind of like a family, and I think we do great things for our students, and that's everybody's goal. So, thank you. I appreciate it. We are going on to, if nobody else, anybody else? Nope? Okay, we're gonna go on to being appreciated, actually. So, it just continues. Let's hit it.
So, on that note, I will add my two cents very briefly, as, and this is from a superintendent's perspective. I've been here eight years, and I can say that there have been some tremendous successes and, you know, some things that are challenging, but I can't say that I really haven't loved just about every minute of it. And part of that is the relationships that I have developed with these people to my left and right. They truly are in this, and I say it, I say it every year, but I truly mean it. They are in it for all kids. This has never been about one child or one group of children, and yes, they have their interests, and they have their different backgrounds and experiences, but you don't want a group that's all for the same exact thing. But at the end of the day, they want the best of everything possible for every child that attends a Huntington school. For that, and for so many other things, I thank them as well. This is a token. This does not, this can not really do justice to the amount of time that they put in. Sometimes it's time that they don't have, but we can give it a shot. And I'd like to start by introducing, well, Mr. Ashwin is right there, some of our finest of elementary students who have agreed to come and share some of their feelings.
I thought you were pointing at me. That's why I went first. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for their unwavering support for all of us at Southdown and the district as a whole. Because of your support, we're able to do the things that we do every day for kids. But I've invited a few friends who could say it even better than I can. Two third graders. First up, I'd like to invite Mr. Asa Sax.
Asa will go a little later. We'll have Grayson step up. This is Grayson Banner.
Dear Board of Education, thank you so much for working so hard for our schools. Also, thank you for our Chromebooks. They are touchscreens. I really like Smartboard. I love learning new things on it, and thanks for all the books and pencils, because I'm learning more and more every day. I really like science, so thank you for the science programs. Right now, we are learning about frogs, and we are getting frogs, also froglets, even eggs. I am so excited to get the frogs. Finally, thank you for all the teachers and substitutes. By the way, my sister is in Woodhull. She does gymnastics, and she loves it. Her teacher is Mr. Vance. Next year, I'm going to STEM. STEM sounds super fun. My favorite subjects are art and math. I love school. Thank you for everything. From Grayson.
Dear Board of Education, thank you for all the gifts you gave us. I love. The touchscreens, we use them a lot.
We use Prodigy and AirPod on our touchscreen. The new child bathrooms are way better than the bathroom actually. They're disgusting. I also liked how they expanded the library. Since the library expanded, there are new books. My favorite book is called Bubby Light, and the main character is named Buddy. The reason I like it is my dog is named Buddy. Another reason I like the library is because there is a maker's space. That is a place in the library where you could build stuff. I built a magnetic building. Thank you for volunteering for our school. It's a lot of work for me.
That's courage, young man. I like that.
Good evening. Jefferson Primary School would like to express our sincere appreciation to the Huntington School Board members for all that you do. We have two very special third graders with us, who are members of our third-grade Jefferson Jaguar Leadership Team. I proudly introduce Reese Carrillo.
Dear Mrs. Hebert, Mr. Dwyer, and Board of Education members, my name is Reese Carrillo, and I am a third-grade student at Jefferson Primary School. Thank you so much for all of the wonderful programs and for all of the support you have given to my school. I love school in Jefferson Primary. It's so fun to learn.
And second, we have Katie Gutiel Ramirez.
Dear Mrs. Hebert, Mr. Dwyer, and all the members of Board of Education, good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Katie Gutiel, and I'm a third grader in Mrs. Wyder's class at Jefferson Primary School. I came tonight to tell you all how thankful we are at Jefferson for all you do to make our school such a fun place to be and such a great place to learn. We really appreciate all the time you spend and the hard work you do to help bring all the wonderful programs and learning resources to our school. They help us to learn more and grow our students. We know that when we try hard and learn new things, our brains grow bigger and bigger. That makes us feel very good. Thank you also for helping us, to make us feel safe at school, because when we feel really safe, we can learn more things. We love going to school at Jefferson. Thank you all again to help bring, to make it such an awesome place.
Oh, and then there he is. He's up and around.
And just to clarify, Mrs. Hebert and Mr. Dwyer, their children went through Jefferson Primary? So, there's the connection there.
Yes, there is a connection.
And we have the entire Washington Primary School.
Good evening to the trustees of the Board of Education. We are just a representation of Washington Primary School. These young ladies behind me have journeyed on to be Brownies, and they would like to present a poem to each of you.
School board members are just ordinary people with extraordinary hearts. You offer the gift of your time to listen, to help, to inspire, to build, to grow, to learn.
You expect no pay, yet the value of your work is no relevant. You know the unexpected joy of a simple hug or a great accomplishment.
You plant a seed of love in countless lives.
School board members are just ordinary people who reach out and take a hand, and together make a difference that lasts a lifetime.
Thank you for all you do for the children of the Huntington Union Free School District with love, Washington Primary School.
And now, I will call up my colleague from the Flower Hill School.
This is Richard, Dr. Richards. If I'm not mistaken, the beautiful young ladies who just spoke were also featured on our Facebook page. Is that the Bridging to Brownies? So, if you missed them this evening, you can see them on the district Facebook page.
Thank you very much.
Should we open it now? You guys did a great job. Thanks. I know you. Was that Dad back there, too? Thank you so much. I can't wait to open it. You guys did a great job. Mr. Giacomo is right here. Watch that cord.
Thank you so much, girls.
Okay, good evening, esteemed board members of Huntington. We would like to thank you from Flower Hill. We have a little shared writing piece from our third-grade dual-language class. So, vasen en español. In Spanish.
Estamos felices de que ustedes representan la comunidad.
Gracias por pensar en nosotros.
Aprendimos que ustedes fijan metas y ponen reglas.
Queremos agradecerles por tu trabajo excelente.
Atentamente.
La clase de tercer grado del señor Edwards.
La escuela primaria de Flower Hill.
Good evening. I would like to join all in offering thanks to you tonight. The Art and Music Department has enjoyed the support of the individuals sitting at that table, not only as board members, but as music and art parents, marching band roadies, and even drama mamas. I speak for all the student artists and musicians and our fine and performing arts staff members when I extend my most sincere thanks for creating the experiences and opportunities for our students in Huntington. Thank you all. Treating us and the board tonight are the Huntington High School String Quartet, Ariel Harvey and Haley Martel on violin, Ella Sipel on viola, and Hannah Balin on cello. They will be performing two selections, Down by Sally Gardens and Shadow of Your Smile. We hope you enjoy. Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. I invite the Board members to back to their seats for our last presentation. Finally, this evening, the Art Department would like to present the Board with a token of their appreciation. Our photography teacher at Huntington High School, Pam Paffard, worked with four students, Bianca Hines, Nicholas Kreschmer, Bianca Lella, and John O'Brien to put together a little something for everyone that's meaningful to all of us and certainly to you. We entitle it "We Shape Our Buildings and Afterwards They Shape Us" by Winston Churchill. And I invite everyone to open your present. There are two pieces of tape on the back, so if you want to just flip it, it might be easiest. So the photography students, the four students, took pictures of each district building and framed them for the Board of Education, so everyone gets their own collage.
That's beautiful.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Just want to thank every single person who came out here tonight to help honor us. We do the job because we obviously love the school district and it's nice every once in a while to be recognized and honored like this. So thank you to every single one of you that came here to help honor us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should we take a minute and let people go?
Any little guys that have to get home, eat and do homework, rest, get ready for tomorrow?
You all did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, young people, and thank you, parents.
That's exactly what I'm saying. Perseverance above all. Well, no, you were...
No, it was because you were Jefferson.
Yeah, so...
You don't get it.
I don't get it. No. Yeah, I just want to see you in it. It was awesome. I think we... We're just waiting on one board member. Just took the opportunity to go... Yeah, anything else is not good follow. So let's all just go home.
So, let's call it a night.
What do you say? And goodbye! Jim isn't here, right? So everybody, quick!
Can we hide under the table?
I already told you where the exits were.
Jen, we can all hide under the table. Let's end on a high note.
I know, I know. I don't want to cheat the people. I know. It's the kind of stuff where just the edge of our seat.
disposal of books. Maybe, you know, when we do the Tachi PTA night.
Right. Then maybe. We'll do a little karaoke. If you didn't come back soon enough, we were all leaving.
We almost just...
I almost just adjourned the meeting. Ah, they're coming.
You know what? While we're... While we're waiting.
Yeah.
Hang on a second. And of course, now I can't get in. Still waiting?
Still waiting. Tax levy present... Well, tax levy. Tax levy. That's what it is. Here's one. There's one now.
I didn't know we were back.
Jen, you are allowed to every once in a while need to go to the bathroom.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't? You were just blithering out in the hallway?
No, I was right there talking to Linda.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, we are to the second item for discussion and action. That is the 2018-19 tax levy. Should I go ahead and read it and call for a motion? Or did you want to say anything before?
No, you can do that. I think we've discussed it. I'm not going to say ad nauseam, but we have discussed it at length during two prior meetings. We have the data associated back up on the screen, so at this point.
Okay, excellent. Then, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the 2018-2019 tax levy in the amount of 107,625,213 before star reimbursement reduction and predicated on an estimated assessed valuation of 44,963,399. That would result in an estimated tax rate of $213... Sorry, $239.36 per 100 assessed value. That's the number I messed up on. So, I need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Christine and Barry, is... Are there any, you know, further questions or comments about this? All right, all in favor? That is all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a sarcastic clap?
I'll take it. It's kind of sad, but we'll take it.
Okay, before I go reading this, do we want to hold a discussion so that we have a name? Or is the...
I don't know if that has to be formally adopted, per se, but I think the problem we had is you were number one, Barry was number two, and neither one of you can make it. And if nobody else can make it, we're not going to have votes regardless.
Do we need a three or four?
Give back my word appreciation stuff because I was planning on doing it and then I forgot I had something else. So I'm sorry.
Is there anybody that might be free on that Saturday morning? I can tell you, I've done it once myself. It, you know, it's not... It's not a terrible thing to attend. It's actually kind of interesting. You get to vote amongst the other delegates from the other school districts. It's just that you have to get into the city kind of early on a Saturday. I would have done it, but I will be heading up to Syracuse to see the marching band performance.
So, and Jen and Jim and I had gone to the resolutions dinner a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, there are a lot of very interesting, you know, items and on the docket for resolution or, and, you know, it's not an uninteresting thing to sit in on. And I unfortunately can't do it, but... I mean, I can try... I can't swear that I can go, but I will make every effort. Saturdays are crazy in my family, but if I can get coverage for everything that I need to cover, then I can make it in the morning.
Well, you know I'm not going to be able to go, so maybe we should add Christine's name in replacement of mine, or Barry's at least. Is there anybody else that might be available?
No, I can be your number two. I'll be there. I'm not the most experienced member here, so...
It feels funny to have you guys since you've all been on the board for a short while.
But we could talk about a lot of stuff ahead of time.
Right.
You know, what we want to...
Interestingly, you'll have guidance from us from this meeting as to what, you know, which way we're, you know, how we feel on the different individual resolutions. But I don't want to pressure anybody into it, obviously. I wish I, you know, it was a different date because I would go.
Oh, but I mean, if there's nobody that can definitely do it, then put me down and I'll do my best to get there for as much as I can, you know?
If I were permitted to do it, I would. It's got to be a trustee. And it's only one person in the room, so it's...
Of course, if anything changes on my end, I'll jump in.
So can you put Christine as one, Mia as two, if she can't, you know?
Yeah, and look, worst-case scenario, if neither one of you can make it, then so be it. But in the event that one of you can, that's why this was positioned before number four.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So if you can make it, at least you'll have some sense as to where the Board stands or where the region stands on the various issues.
Right. So do we have to do that or we can just keep going at this point?
I think you can just go right on to... Joanne will facilitate the communication in the morning to replace the two of you with Christine and Linda. And should they be able to make it, we can move on to number four.
And, you know, in regards to the convention overall, there's things still going on on Sunday or no?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I don't want to waste your time.
All right, so then we are going to move on to number four. Thank you, Christine and Linda, for, you know, being possibly even available because that's, you know, and it was not a lot of notice and I apologize for that. So we have this year's NISPA convention in New York City from the 25th to the 27th of October. A number of us are going on a number of different days, but we have the voting delegates guide and the resolutions worksheet that we will talk about so people know where we stand as a Board. How do you want to go through it?
Make a suggestion here. You have a number of issues listed and obviously, we spent a lot more time on these at the Nassau Suffolk School Board's Resolutions Dinner.
Yeah.
My suggestion would be focus on any where the opinions may differ from those that are presented on the tally sheet.
I have just one, but I'm going to be in the minority about it anyway.
Or if there's any questions on any of them, this would be the time to ask them. So if we agreed with all those, or if the Board agreed with all those positions, when either of you were in the room holding up the card,
Yeah.
you would do so in favor or against as listed on the sheet.
Is there... Are there any that stand out to people that feel, you know, if you feel like they warrant a discussion or you're curious about what the rationale was for the vote at the resolutions dinner?
I'm curious where everyone stands on making kindergarten mandatory.
Right. It should have been made mandatory a long time ago.
So that was not one, right?
No, and where is that one? What number are we at?
Six.
Six. Yeah, no, I mean, everybody supports that. I think it's just a matter of...
It's a matter of funding for certain districts.
Funding, but they're already funding partially universal... Well, I mean, not really, but...
Free K, so many.
Free K is mandatory and a lot of the argument back when was, you know, how can you go in that direction when kindergarten is not yet mandatory?
I feel like it's kind of an afterthought, almost like they just need to go and like correct the...
There are very few districts at this point in the state that do not have full-day kindergarten. And I don't believe there's any that don't have any.
Any kindergarten, so it's kind of almost, you know, a matter of, you know, just writing it down and ratifying it or whatever.
It could become an important thing in districts that go on austerity, like if kindergarten is not mandatory, it's a possible thing that could go on the chopping block and, you know, if it's not a required thing.
Right, and I suppose that's why they want to make it firm and legal, you know, in some ways, or just to even, you know, make it consistent.
It's educationally sound and nobody's going to argue at the point. And also understand that whatever is adopted at the annual meeting is just... They have some lobbying pull, they have some legislative influence, but they're not decision-making. So this is just...
Do we know if there's proposed legislation to make kindergarten mandatory?
It has been bantered about and I believe, I think there is a bill. I'm not going to swear to it, but I believe there is a bill. I don't know if it's gone through.
I mean, a bunch of these, truthfully, have been on since I joined the Board and probably the predates me. I bet if we asked Bill, he's seen some of these from, like, opposed new unfunded and underfunded mandates. I think we've been talking about that for 20 years. I don't remember a year we didn't talk about that as a problem. So, I'll tell you the one that I feel that they're opposing and I personally would support, the number 20. Because I look at it from a preschool vantage point. I can tell you that how our arbitrary date of December 1st as a cutoff for when kids can and cannot come to kindergarten seems to me just that, arbitrary. I think it makes sense. Most states, I think in the country, truthfully, go by this kind of thing, which is September 1st or when kindergarten starts. If you're five, you can come. If you're not, you can't. But for some reason, there was very little support for that. There was, you know, opposition more than support because it's financial. And see, for me, I just think that it's common sense. It just is a practical, in a practical way. It just makes more sense to me.
It seems common sense to me that for the districts to be aligned in a way.
Well, they should all be aligned.
Especially in an area, let's take our town for example. We have lots of, especially when your children are young, there might be a time where you would, you know, switch districts. And all of a sudden, you thought you were going to kindergarten, now you're not going to kindergarten, you know?
All of Long Island is December... I mean, is, do we have the same cutoff date, like, across Long Island? Or does everybody choose their own, Jim?
That's an excellent question. I don't know of any that aren't December 1st.
Truthfully, that's what I was going to say. I'm almost positive it is December 1st all over the place because I know Cold Spring Harbor is because I have this discussion with families from...
I don't know of any local that are not December 1st.
Anyway, I'm not sure why they're opposing... Anyway, I'm not sure why they're opposing that. I guess it is financial, but in my, that's the only one that I felt I had a differing opinion than the rest of the people at the dinner. That's all.
And they did state that the opponents of it, or those opposing, did indicate that there were financial concerns, and that's why they, it's not that they didn't think that.
They don't see the rationale.
September 1st was not a viable choice, but there would be financial implications.
Meaning that all of a sudden, one class would be big?
No, it's a one-year, it's just a one-year financial.
A one-year financial concern, yeah.
I do believe that this is supporting date change statewide, not just the option.
Right.
Supporting a mandate from September 1st for every.
I'm saying the financial concern would just happen for one year, that you'd have all of a sudden more kindergarten center. And it would follow through, yes, until they got it.
But these are also, these are NISBA positions. These are not laws, they're not binding.
It's not like it goes, oh, yeah.
It's just a loud opinion.
Right. The one that I understand they're taking position on is the police officers being allowed to.
What they support, and they are one, one member of the educational conference board, but they, they don't, they don't make decisions.
Tell you what, when I look at number three, I understand where they're coming from, but it just doesn't seem like they're furthering anything that is substantive until I look at number 15. I think once you look at number 15, they're finally trying to make or impact things that are truly gonna have a fruitful effect in what we want to see with regards to gun use or even threatened gun use as they're asking for here. Because number three, there's, it's just, there's nothing to it.
15 carries more weight.
Look at, if you can, scroll down, you should be able to scroll down.
At the bottom, there's an amendment.
Look at the resolution, resolution three, after the last page of the table. That was amended, so now it reads as the sentence that begins to resolve.
Right.
That the New York State School Boards Association supports efforts to improve school safety by limiting or reducing unauthorized access to guns in schools. This was probably the only resolution that night that generated some back and forth. And there are people on different sides of the political continuum.
And I think people that night, too, were mindful of the fact that we may decide something downstate, but upstate New York has a very different mindset than we do when you look at issues like this. So I think that was the other conversation was, you know, we can think what we want here, but you can't expect that that's going to be a unified feeling all throughout the state.
I like number 18. Yeah, you and me both.
Yeah, yeah.
Just do your job on time, please.
Did you have a question about one of them? I know you were looking at, what was it, number 17? To supporting basic earning? Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, I just didn't know that that was our place to take a stand, but I guess we can support it.
Well, that, that's, I believe, that's retirement system concern right there. So there's a cap until the public servant is 65, there is a cap on earnings after retirement. And that ensures that there is no abuse of the system. They're looking for an exception there when a retired law enforcement officer is capable and available to serve as an SRO or a school safety officer.
19?
Yeah.
I don't see why it's a resolution when you can just adopt it as a school by school, if you really want to do it. I was looking at number 19. I like it.
But they're trying to make it statewide.
Right. I'm gonna say all of these are looking for statewide support.
Right.
Okay.
And it's always an option that a board has. As a matter of fact, we are looking at many programs now that increase our cultural proficiency as a school district, but this would be more on a statewide level. And it came from upstate, then.
Great initiative. I've had a taste of it, you hung out with my dad.
Number nine. Okay, so what do we have to, do we have to?
You know, there's not, there's no vote here, just, I guess, an agreement that you, unless there's a specific resolution that you'd like to go in a different direction on, that you would simply go along with the outcomes of the Nassau Suffolk Resolutions Dinner. So the resolutions dinner was a Nassau Suffolk position, a collection of Nassau Suffolk positions.
Right, but when we vote, if we have a delegate at that meeting, we're obviously free to vote however we want, whether we agree with Nassau Suffolk, you know, the resolutions dinner or not.
Doesn't mean that you have to go along with what?
That was kind of a scary sound, wasn't it?
What was that? Somebody want to go check out that scary sound? So basically, unless we have anybody that feels really strongly that we differ on one of these, we can just, you know, basically, charge our delegates with the job of voting, you know, with these resolutions, you know, I mean, voting the way the resolutions dinner came out. Anybody have any others?
All right, I think that's it, then. I don't, we don't have to vote on anything, right?
Nope.
All right, then. Oh, all right, I'm doing funny things with my computer, sorry. So we're moving on to item number five, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that brings us to Board Policy 5551, allocation of Title I Part A funds in the district. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, issue initial first read approval of new policy 5551, allocation of Title I Part A funds in the district. So this is just a first read approval, but I'm going to get a motion, Tom, and a second from Linda. Any discussion, or did you want to mention anything about this, Jim?
We had a brief policy committee meeting earlier today, and primarily not for this policy, but for one of the others that we'll talk about. This is not a lengthy policy, as I expressed to members of the committee. My only concern is the last statement on allocation methodology, because there is not a great deal of guidance from the powers that be in terms of what kind of document has to be in place. Right now, we have been audited before on Title I funding allocations, and it has come out just fine. And there are things that we must abide by here in terms of supplement, not supplant. But exactly what would be sufficient as documented allocation methodology, it's a little unclear at this point, but, you know, we are certainly cognizant of which buildings in the district are in fact eligible for Title I funds and what the contributing factors are in each building.
Do you think the guidelines are going to get better clarified?
I think they're going to become more specific, particularly in light of the SFA financial reporting requirements that have just taken hold.
Okay. If they get more specific, it gets more complicated, doesn't it?
It will, but this, it's, it's a broad statement. The district has, we do have a methodology, it's, it's just, you know, it's something that I think we, we need to become more specific with.
All right, any other questions for Jim? So we had a motion and a second to first read approval. All in favor? Excellent, thank you. It's us to Board Policy 6121, which is the sexual harassment in the workplace policy. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education bypass first read and issue final approval of Board Policy 6121, sexual harassment in the workplace. I'm looking for a motion. Thank you, Xavier, and a second.
Second.
And Tom is the first person I saw, so Xavier and Tom, did you want to talk about this one?
This is the reason for the policy committee meeting. We have been waiting for state guidelines on the, on what we need to place in terms of contents in, in the revised 6121 policy. We did have a policy that wasn't, it was adopted in 2015, it wasn't that long ago, called sexual harassment involving district personnel. This broadens it, it goes from a three-page to a six-page policy. I shared with the policy committee the prior policy and the new policy. The new policy essentially contains everything that the old policy contained and then some. Most significantly, this policy must be adopted by October 9th, 2018. You'll notice that it's October 15th. We did not have any guidance from the state in terms of the contents of the policy until October 1st. Therefore, we could not do anything until this meeting regardless. And we had actually one coming up less than a week later. There are other districts that don't, so they're, they're going to adopt this at the first possible opportunity. It does expand upon a number of different things. Most, most significantly, it covers more than just employees, it, it addresses visitors and other contracted or related personnel that may be, contracted service providers that may be entering the building. It also requires that the new policy be disseminated promptly and that training of all district personnel take place by October 9th, 2019, and annually thereafter. So what we will have to do is make sure the information is shared with every employee in the district, and then that training must take place within a year's time, and again, every year thereafter. And we are looking at ways to do that in the most streamlined and effective fashion possible. I don't know if there's anything in there that, that you have questions on?
Well, we all had a chance to see it. It's obviously, I think it lays it out very explicitly what constitutes the behavior and what actions are taken and all of that. Did anybody have questions or comments about this policy?
Invaded by the attorneys, and it is in complete alignment with the state guidelines that were received on the 1st of October.
So we're going to pass on the first read into final?
We're gonna go right to final.
Yeah, I'm asking for that just based on the timeline.
Yeah, final approval. That's why I ask your questions now, if you've got them.
Just out of curiosity, do the training program that we must provide, do we have to create that?
Do we have to what?
Create it.
No, as a matter of fact, we are looking into something that can be done electronically.
Okay, yeah, because that interacted.
Yeah.
That came up in the meeting also.
That was, was at the policy committee meeting. Just to refresh, we have two civil rights complaints offices in the district, and they are at opposite ends of this table. That would be Ms. McCoy and Dr. Acker.
Okay, so.
Miranda just thought I gave her another job.
Oh, she was like, another hat? Okay, so we had a first and a, a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. That brings us to our final item for action and discussion, Board Policy 7136, education of students in foster care. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education issue initial first read approval of policy 7136, the education of students in foster care. Okay, so let's get a motion.
Motion.
Barry and a second, Linda. Mr. Polanski?
I don't believe that this policy is, is actually 100% mandated, but it is a policy that should have been in place and should be in place moving forward. We have a policy in place for our students who are homeless. This basically does the same for students who are in foster care. It spells out our requirements as a district in terms of transportation, designation of a foster care liaison, which is Dr. Acker, and district responsibilities when district is designated as a student's district of attendance. So, and a couple of the questions that came up during the policy committee meeting, or the one primary question was if a child is in district and ends up in foster care out of district, they are still entitled to attend school in district until such time that a best interest decision is made. Obviously, our goal here is to make sure that the education of the child in question is as least disrupted as possible.
Absolutely. Just to be clear, the policy is not mandated, but the responsibilities within the policy are mandated.
Absolutely. Somebody had asked me about policy, they were doing some sort of research for a class, and I explained that policy isn't just something that we come up with and decide it's a good idea. If you look at policies in our policy manual, every one of them is aligned with either a federal or state statute, a commissioner regulation, or another policy. So even if this wasn't in place, our responsibilities would be the same. And the laws are obviously cited at the bottom of the policy.
Right. All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That is everyone, thank you.
That was the first read.
First read, right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
All right, we got those. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Barry and a second from Christine. All in favor? Thank you. All right, we're back to you, Mr. Polanski.
I am recommending that the board approve personnel items on schedules 5, 8, 11, 13, 15, 16, and 22.
Okay, got those in front of us. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Barry and a second. Tom, all those in favor? It's all of us, thank you. And now to Dr. Acker.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, approve items I through M on this evening's business agenda.
All right, we also have those in front of us. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Xavier and a second from Christine. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All good. Thank you, Dr. Acker. Okay, second public commentary, did anybody want to come up to the mic? Oh, look, we got a taker. I know that lady. Come on down, Miss Alice Marie. Are you going to sing for us?
We're gonna wait for you.
Let's do the ABC song, Jen.
Everybody.[1702.32]